Being the hour of six o'clock, we call the Oxford School Committee meeting to order for Monday, April 26th, 2021. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL Chapter 38, subsection 18, and the Governor's order concerning imposing strict limitation of the number of people that may gather in one place, meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions with the meeting as soon as possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings. For individuals who wish to join remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and enter PIN 824-3296-0752, or join the meeting link off the Oxford Public Schools website, pass code being 058228. That I call the order. And with a roll call, roll call vote, roll call attendance, everyone here is, all members are present. Our first order of business will be our student representative, Ms. Ashley McGowan available?
Hi, thank you for having me tonight.
Good evening, Ashley.
Good evening. As we transition to having everyone back in the building again, the Student Council is working on building more school spirit. We have a Pirate Pride Day planned for Wednesday so students and teachers can unite in their orange and black Oxford gear. And next week, we'll be having our first Spirit Week with everyone in the school, not with two separate cohort weeks, and since last year. And we're also going to have daily activities planned during Teacher Appreciation Week for students and teachers to have some fun with a little bit of competition as the year kind of winds down. That's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you for joining us with those updates. Next piece of business is the minutes of the remote meeting from the Superintendent Screening Committee, which was held on March 4th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. A procedural note is that, yes, two members weren't attended, this committee has been disbanded, so at this stage, we have to accept their final minutes. So entertain a motion to approve the March 4th, 2021 Superintendent Screening Subcommittee.
I'll make the motion.
Moved in second in discussion. All's a few favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Approve, five zero. I will bundle next together, being April 7th, April 8th, and April 12th. All members are present. Entertain a motion to approve the school committee meetings, a special meeting, April 7th and 8th, and the regular school committee meeting of April 12th.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second in discussion. Being none, all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed extensions? Being none, five in affirmative, and those minutes are approved. And as we go through our agenda, we have no correspondence, and first, under information proposals, I will call Dr. Susan Henderson forward, please, if she is.
Via remote.
If she is via remote.
I am here.
Thank you. In front of us, we have the Student Opportunities Act. Could you briefly just go over what will we be voting on this evening in this?
Sure, no problem at all, thank you. So the Student Opportunity Grant is, is, has, was proposed last year by the Governor, and from our perspective, we are obtaining $48,000 from the grant. And as part of the process, what you need to do is develop a plan, and because of the fact that our amount is so low, it's under $1.5 million, we are able to do the short form. So what I've attached for you is the short form that is required through, for DESI, and you will see that the focus for us is on social emotional learning. We want to, part of the focus of the Student Opportunity Grant was to close the achievement gaps that were happening in our district, and with, in our district, it is English language learners, students with disabilities, as well as students from low-income, economically disadvantaged families. So our focus is on social emotional learning because we believe that in order for us to make gains and close the gaps, the first thing that needs to happen is students need to be available for learning. And in order for students to be available for learning, we need to provide them the social emotional learning skills and provide them the support that they need. So as we went through this, I reached out to the school guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, as well as the principals, and we, and ad team, and we had some discussions about it, and we, they've determined, we determined as a district that there was two separate, we wanted to have a program that supported the elementary school level, as well as a program that supported the high school, middle high school, high school level. So the, the program that seems best suited for our district is Second Step Digital. We've had Second Step in the district before, but the Second Step Digital enhances the program, enhances things. First of all, one of the major sellers from my perspective is it can be used by everyone in the district, as well as it's updated, so that we're not just buying a program and that program stays in place and, and we're using it as it is. As the world changes, as things happen, what's, what will happen is the program itself will be updated, so we're always getting up-to-date information. And it can be vetted, embedded across the curriculum, as well as many teachers in the classroom, as well as the mindfulness teacher, the school guidance counselor, or adjustment counselors would be using it, as well as any other staff district-wide. So it brings a common language to the elementary school. It's a language they already are familiar with because we have had Second Step in the district, and so that's what best supports our Chaffee and Barton schools. Then at the middle school, high school, it was determined that what made sense was the component, SEL components of Ingenuity. This provides for courses, there's nine semester-long courses within Ingenuity that will support the middle school and high school. It also springboards off of Castle, which is what the middle school and high school have used within the district. So with that being said, it makes sense, it provides those nine semester-long courses, it is lesson-based, there's videos within it, four to six-minute video, short story, real stories, real people talking about real issues, and then there's, there's, then there goes on to have some guided discussion questions, there's a quiz, which is usually one to three questions long to support the learning, as well as a writing assignment, and these are all components that the teachers can choose to use, or, you know, based upon their style and based upon how we're using the class. There's also a home piece involvement, as well as a writing component with a response to action. So that kind of summarizes what the two programs are, why we chose them, as well as the social emotional learning needs within our district, which is a major concern, especially coming back after COVID. We need to make sure that we provide some stronger support within the district.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. Questions? Canakiole, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson. So could you talk a little bit, how's it gonna be, I can understand that the elementary level through the, through their related arts, I'm assuming that's how it'll be delivered, how is this gonna be implemented at this, at OMS and OHS?
Well, at OMS, one, and at OHS, well, at OMS, I know that Amy and I have had some discussions, and she had mentioned it could be used during the, the additional block that she had, or that she needs to have during her day, where, say, and Amy may want to talk to about it a little bit more than I, I can, with more specifics, but it can be used as an elective, as that, that extra block to provide support to the students that used to be like, say, the old flex blocks and things like that, so that it'll be used throughout the day. It also provides time for the teachers to do what they need to do. And I believe she was using Amy, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong?
Yeah.
You want to speak a little bit to how you plan?
Yeah. We're in the process of looking at how we're gonna restructure our schedule a little bit for next year to be able to provide supports to the students, and, you know, we do have the flex block, which is what we were gonna use for SEL and interventions originally anyway, so we were thinking about incorporating it into that, and that's where we were doing some of this work to begin with, and also as part of the rotation for some of the students as well. So there's a couple different places that we're thinking about incorporating it. We haven't 100% made our decision yet, but those are the two areas that we're looking at for that, so that all kids would get exposed to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple more, Dr. Sue, you said 48,000, I know that number is 48.5, I mean, is that, does it matter, or?
No, it is 48.5, I'm sorry.
Right, but you said, oh, 48.5 is what's allotted, you said?
Yes, that is what we're allocating.
45.8? Sue, or is it 48.5?
Whatever it says, I'm sorry, I had to pull up the paper, my computer went down.
The paper says 48, 17,031,500, so that's 48.5.
But the?
But you said it was allotted for 48.
48.5 is what it's allotted, I'm sorry. My, and that was what we're, what we were, you know, it's just like any of the IDA grants, et cetera, they allocate our portion based upon our numbers. That is what we were given, was 48.5.
And just, just one final one for me, I know it says in Part III, you know, how you're gonna monitor the success, you know, and dropout rate, chronic absenteeism, you know, obviously the MCAS data, which will be a little bit, take some time to build up, but how, within Second Step and within the Ingenuity, SEI, SEI components, is there any assessment within that that like rates sense of belonging, sense of community, how they feel, the teachers treat them, like, is there any, is there any component to address the social emotional part? Because these dropout rates, absenteeism, growth, and MCAS really isn't assessing social emotional growth.
I realize that.
It is indirectly, but is there anything within these two programs that assess growth from that level?
Um, I'm not quite sure, I'm understanding.
There is Ingenuity. The Ingenuity program does have a.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Okay, could we get back to Mr. Provo's question? Excuse me, I don't think it was quite answered about the metrics. I know when we're signing off on a grant, with being, even an entitlement grant, is go back and how is it going to be measured? Could we hear, hear how we're going to, how this grant will achieve those four areas, please?
Yeah, well, the thing of it is, is that we were, as far as I'm concerned, in order for students to be able to take the MCAS, in order for students to be able to access their education and not drop out, to be present in the schools, we need to be able to make them available for learning. The way to make them available for, give them, is to give them more strategies and more supports. And, and from my perspective, by providing that social emotional component, we're providing them more strategies and supports for them to feel safe and supported within the school, and, and therefore, once with children feeling safe and supported within the school, then they can be, feel, the, get, regain the ability to, to be available for learning. I don't know how else to describe it, other than in my head, however describing it is, you know, if they don't feel safe when they come to school, if they don't feel like they have that support from staff, if they don't have the social emotional learning skills, the coping skills, the, they're not going to be available for learning. And if they're not available for learning, then they're not going to be able to address the academics and make progress moving forward.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that. I guess my question is, where is the baseline data coming from? And that's why I was asking, is there something embedded in the two programs that give you a baseline to start, and then you can follow the progression throughout the year or into the next year to see where kids are at? So how do you know which kids aren't feeling happy at school? How do you know which kids are sad at school? Like, so that's what I was asking, and it sounded like Amy, Amy was telling me that there is something embedded in the, in the Ingenuity.
I, I, I looked at, I looked at the Ingenuity program, which is one of the reasons I, I liked, I wanted to use it, and just because we had access to looking at it through using Ingenuity for other things this year, and I've used Second Step as a teacher. So the Second Step program, if you've ever used it, does have assessments built in for every process that you do that measures how the students are, are feeling and, and processing and going through, so that you can measure how the students are, are doing things going along, and it's something that the teachers can also work to build if we needed a more diagnostic way of looking at how the students are doing. That's something that can be, if we feel like we need a more robust way of collecting data, that's a very easy, simple thing that we can work as an ad team to build into the program if need be. I mean, I'm sure that's something that Rob and John can address more, because they're the ones that are using it in the elementary level, but I know that there are assessments built into both programs, and surveys, and, and things that you can collect data from on the students and, and their feelings and their emotions and how they're looking at things. But it's also very easy to build in your own surveys and assessments to measure that as well into both programs, so I don't think that that would be an issue.
Okay, and I know in past presentations here, we've heard from the elementary staff, how, what's the plan at the high school?
I don't know if Dave wants to speak to that.
Yeah, I, I was trying to find my unmute button. So much, a lot like Amy, so Ingenuity does have assessments pre and post, and also Naviance has some activities that we're gonna use, but, so at the high school, we're going to reintroduce our advisory period, and right now, we're having, right now, that's once a week, and we're having discussions on whether it should be more than once a week, it should be every day. So each teacher will be able to use this program in their advisory at least once a week, and then it'll be used by guidance and our, our adjustment counselors too, once they identify small group counseling sessions and, and things like that. So we're primarily gonna use our advisory period next year. How many days a week, we're, we're still having that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, and, and I know we are voting on this tonight, what I would like to see as, as an attachment back to the school committee, is Mr. Canakiole asked about baseline numbers, what our, and I'm not gonna ask for it this evening, but it can be sent to us via email, is what is our, what is our present dropout rate? So we're looking at baseline for absenteeism, have the percentage of students missing 10% or more, so we can look at any type, look at type, look at a grant, and again, you're gonna do a quantitative analysis, where, has this money helped us? And I think when we start looking at allocation of resources, we want to see what we started with baseline. So if you could forward those numbers to Helen, and then Helen can, can, can send those out to board members, so we know where, where we started with this, and we can evaluate it the next time when this comes up. September, you have a question?
I just need a clarification on the dollar figure. I have before me $45,800, but we're talking $48,500, so I would just like clarification if I could, please?
Yes, it's 48.5. The other, the other amount of monies would be used for any types of supplies, and, and there's curriculum materials attached with Second Step that I feel that, that there are, that the, would be helpful to the elementary school, so that's why the additional monies will be spent in that way.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Entertain a motion to approve the Student Opportunities Grant for submission.
I second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Canakiole?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn votes yes as well, five in affirmative, thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing the next round of numbers on where this grant is going.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Next item, elementary principals, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Pelzarsky, you have revisions to your handbook.
I got it last time. Good evening. As you can see, very little changes to the handbook, we, the one request I asked over at Chaffee was just to dictate to parents that we in fact do not use a graded system for quarter one at the K and one, and I believe it's the two, I could be wrong, but I believe it's K1 and two first quarter, maybe I'm wrong on that. I think we, I know we do not at K1, but we've never said that in a, in a document, other than just sharing it with parents after the first quarter, right, right around the first quarter. So that was the only change that we had requested at Chaffee. We added some, obviously changed Dr. Nash's name and some numbers and added.
Housekeeping stuff, but really not, no major changes at all. We'd just done it last year, and I believe last year, we, we changed a couple of.
Yeah, we had.
Homework was one last year, we really talked about, and attendance, yeah, so.
And I will say, you guys, in the policy area, you were talking about the policy, it's still currently in the handbook regarding kindergarten, I, I don't know if that was something you guys were gonna change at that level, it hadn't been changed for, you guys were looking at whether or not you wanted to review that, but we're going with the old policy, because it hasn't changed as far as I can, early admission to kindergarten, sure. You remember that, there was a?
They did change.
I think we did change.
So then, is that, is that out, is that, I gotta revise, because, okay, so that was changed to?
Voted December or June.
Voted, yeah, so it did change, so you need to, your handbook would need to reflect.
I think I was with you on that one, pal.
Well, we took whatever amendments, if that was current on your website, because we go to the web page to get your current, so if that was changed on there, then that's what we uploaded, so. Okay, then.
Yeah, they should be, all right, because we went through and updated all of the policies in the back and checked the dates.
And I'm yet, I'm yet to receive anybody requesting one, so maybe that's where they're going first ahead of the game, but I haven't seen it, so I just wanted to check on that, but we didn't see anybody yet, and usually by now.
Could you pull it up? Could you pull that policy up quick, or so just pull that up?
Yep.
And I just want, before we do vote that in, because that is a substantial change.
Well, you guys changed the webpage today?
He didn't work hard, you know that.
All right, this'll be interesting.
He might be watching it right now and say, here you go.
District, school committee, and the right policy.
Yep, I just want to check that one, it's.
Please do, yes.
And then, other than that, because that's what we, we based off, the changes off the policies directly from there.
Is that entrance age for kindergarten, or is that, what, which one is it, there were two policies?
It's entrance age, it's entrance admission, I think it was.
Okay.
265 pages. Okay, I got it here, just in case.
JDB 179.
April 25th.
Yeah, it was reviewed in June of 2020, no changes made.
So that's not current then.
See, that's why I went, I.
I, I don't think there was ever changes made, I think it went back and forth, but I think it was decided to leave it.
That's, I, at the, that's what I thought you guys decided ultimately to leave it, because it was already in place, but.
Because there was a lot, because there was a lot of changes in that, there's a lot of proposed changes on that. We can hold, we can, we can always bring you back with that, if that's another change that you have.
I, it's not up to us to change, like, we're good with whatever way, I just wanted to make sure.
We're not changing our policy.
We want to put the right one in.
Make sure it's, and your handbook is reflective of, of current policy.
Because I, because I, that's, I thought I said, it was, it was, it was voted on and reviewed at a June meeting, but it wasn't changed, so.
Right, we reviewed it again in December, January.
Two of us felt another, I feel like we were missing one person for that vote, or maybe not.
It's page 179.
Maybe you weren't.
Maybe you weren't here, Cory.
Children who will be five years of age, honor before August 31st, and then it gives, as a district, it, it goes into that same language about the district giving, and I know you guys talked about wanting to remove it, so it's currently still your policy.
And it did not get removed.
I don't remember.
Okay.
That's discussion.
That would be discussion.
So as of now, that's still a live piece, but other than that, that's the only, I mean, we put the policies right from there, so if it fits, it fits.
That's fine, if that always be revisited, if that comes up before the printing goes out, so we'll, we'll, everyone double check on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, quick question, could you guys just discuss the difference in your performance levels, why the 4-3-2-1 at K to two, and why the A? I mean, I obviously know the correlation, why not have common language? What's the, could you guys explain the difference?
Well, that's a great question, and it comes up a lot. It's an ongoing debate with, especially from, between the K and one team, and originally the two, it was K, I think it's still K1 and two, and so we still use the number system as, as is, and we've just, we, we spent a lot of time explaining that to parents. To be honest with you, I don't know why it's not this, you know, across the board, I think it was something to do, it was well before my time, and we just, you know, we were fine with it, it just, it does require a lot of explanations.
The grading system, yes. So I think what should happen with the new curriculum director is there should be a review, and there should be a K4 development of a standards-based report card, that's one of the topics that I would tell you would be high on my list to suggest that, because I think this predated everybody, and when they moved the grade, there's no connection and continuity for our parents, so.
And I actually think that it'd be harder at a grade two and three, when the change is right there in your same building, so it's something that.
No, I agree, doesn't need to be looked at.
Standard grade report cards have been used for like, at least four or five years. Several, several years.
Sure.
And I feel like we're behind the times.
Yeah, well, it's a topic that would have been addressed by, obviously, a curriculum director, they would be leading it, you know.
Would you say we're behind the times in the switching?
Not, not with what we do and deliver instruction, I'm saying just the, how we report based on our standards and the alignment.
Pointing achievements.
And, and do you think the K1 has it right, K1, two has it right, or the two, three, so I don't, like, I'm, I'm in the same boat, because we've had this conversation that my, you know, we've actually changed the report card a few times.
I think the K1 and two, like, is more aligned with the standards-based report card, right? But this AP, NI, WX is a little bit different.
It also includes an identification of those guaranteed standards that you want to assess.
Right.
During each quarter, what you can assess and what the expectation would be for a student, and then you take that standard and you develop a rubric, whatever that rating's going to be, as to whether four, or three, or two, one, or whatever you're gonna call it, whether you're gonna, and I don't think that, that that has happened.
Right.
So first is identifying those, you know, those guaranteed standards that we all are going to assess, because you can't assess all of them.
Right.
What's important to report, and the, in reading and mathematics to begin with.
And that's a topic for another night.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a topic for another night, okay.
But is that something, I mean, that's, again, like you said, Dr. Nash, the need for a curriculum.
Right, and then, like I said, that's, that's a topic for, for another night. But right now, we're just voting on this, Mr. Canakiole has the questions, and he's giving them the answer, so with that, any other questions? Entertain a motion to approve the revisions to Oxford Elementary Schools' Parent-Suiting Handbook 2021, 2022, which reflects both AM Chaffee and Clara Barton.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second, first in second. Canakiole?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
And Mr. Quinn votes yes, 12, five in affirmative, passes 19, 12, those revisions, and we will look into on the last, on that requirement on for kids starting age of kindergarten. Mr. Burke, you have an update from the Superintendent Selection Subcommittee.
Yes, so this coming Thursday, school committee members will be holding site visits at both Tantascua and Dudley Charlton. There will be in-person visits during the day, and also virtual meetings in the evening with school committee members. And then next week, on Monday, May 3rd, Mr. Dean Packard will be visiting Oxford for the day, and on Tuesday, May 4th, Mr. Mike Lucas will be visiting Oxford for the day. We will have, or we did put out via email feedback forms for staff and community members to use, so again, we're encouraging folks to attend those meetings on those days, and give us some feedback about the two candidates, and then we will meet with them one final time on May 10th, I believe it is, if I take it right?
Yes.
Yeah, before we hopefully have our final vote, or move on from there.
And you're still up?
I'm still up. So we have for you in your packet, a list of potential members for the District Accountability and Curriculum Subcommittee, so I guess we need to vote on that subcommittee?
Entertain a motion for the District Accountability, Accountability and Curriculum Subcommittee 2020, 2021. twenty twenty, twenty twenty member list, Almina Griffin chairperson, Corey Burke vice chair, Gilkowsky member, Kelly Delgado also members, Amy Peck, Katie Proctor, and Megan Rody are all members, myself, Daniel Coonan, ex officio member, as well as Dr. Christine Nash, ex officio number, member, and ex officio means obviously by virtue of office or position. I intend a motion to approve those names.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Move and seconded.
Because it worries you don't really want a chair.
Mr. Kenakioli, have discussion, yes.
Yeah, so, I, I guess, so are we approving this group for the next month, and then going to have to reassign this group, or should we, because it's twenty to twenty twenty-one, right? So we're going to be twenty-one, twenty-two. Is, should we make it twenty to twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two, so we don't have to go back, or?
I think we have to wait to see how elections turn out.
What, what happens? It's an annual, it's an annual list.
Yeah.
We just knew it last year. That's what's coming up right now. We have a curriculum to review.
You have a curriculum to review and you need to commit.
And we realize we never officially submitted the committee?
This year.
It's closed up this year, and if, and if all members stay present of one through seven, myself and Dr. Nash excluded, we're ex officio by virtual position, you assume that role. So we're, we're, following May seventeenth, I will not be in this chair.
Yeah.
The next chairman would assume ex officio, and you can be ex officio as well as be a member.
Yeah, no, they answered the question. They had business to do this year, I understand why that particular vote, that's good.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, those members. Five zero, it is approved. Okay. Mr. Ladoo, we're from our business office, fiscal year twenty-one, budget to actual report, please sir.
Thank you, Chairman Coonan, members of the committee. Part of your packet, you should have received the budget to actual report through the end of March. I don't have much of an update with respect to that report for this evening. However, I just want to remind the committee of a few things, and give an update as a overall general picture as we look towards the end of the year. As I go through these reports, I can see a lot of surplus items, and to kind of make heads of tails of it, we had a lot of conferences that weren't attended, so it's quite a few budget lines for conferences that just didn't happen, or didn't happen in person, rather. Substitutes still, I'll assume that we're not getting them, because those lines are not being utilized as normal. Now, that could change between, you know, May and as the weather gets a little bit nicer. One big thing we've talked a lot about this past year, transportation not being utilized. That's for our remote days, late buses, athletics. And another item is extracurricular, after-school activities, athletics. That certainly has not been in full swing as it has been in prior years. So with that said, Dr. Nash had given a, she had indicated back in March, a estimate of about six hundred thousand, as we're looking at it. And again, we're going back based on the data as of February. As we're kind of fine tuning this figure, I can confidently say, as of today, we have a nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollar surplus that we're looking at for the end of this year. So you have a substantial amount of monies that the committee might, may want to repurpose for, for other needs of the, of the school district.
Indicated to you at a prior school committee meeting, I think it was the March first memo at your school committee meeting, that I anticipated conservatively at that point, six hundred thousand, and then I had said to you that we would be coming forward at a later date with a plan, but we'd be looking at three areas, food services, technology, revolving accounts. And that's after we had prepaid FY twenty-two sped tuitions, and also our anticipated purchase of a K eight ELA instructional resources. So we're still operating with that, but now we have more money. We're fine tuning those areas, but we're also looking at, if you remember, the update from the technology director was the need to fill a large gap as a result of a one-time capital of four hundred and fifty Chromebooks. It may be advantageous for us to do that, and then get yourself on an annual cycle of a hundred or a hundred and fifty per year, which is a lot more manageable. So we'll be coming forward, should answer, with a plan sometime in May for you to vote and consider with how to spend the rest of this money.
One more, unless, anybody has any questions on the budget to actual report?
Good spot to be in. Good spot to be in.
So we had provided the FinCom with a list of things that we prioritized for our schools. Are those the things that we'll be looking at to add now that we have these additional funds, or are we straying off of that? Because I know the town wasn't picking up all of that, was doing some of those, but we had prioritized those.
You're looking at some of the capital projects? Those would have to be concluded between now and the end of this school year.
Okay.
So some of those we have done, the bathrooms, but some of those projects, you'd have to go up a bid, and it would not be expended. So most of these are going to be around anything that we can get in, obviously, between now or expand between now and the end of the school year.
And that's June thirty, right?
June thirty.
Correct, yes, so June thirty.
All right, thank you.
So there's no further questions. As long as the, the chair would hear, I just have one quick update regarding transportation for the committee. We did put out the routes for the high and middle, just about prior to the school break there, the April vacation. So we're going through fixing a lot of concerns. We probably had about a dozen or so. But one thing that has come to light is Durham has approached me about reducing a bus here in Oxford, as it appears they're having shortage, driver shortage issues in other communities. I have responded to the request with a no, as we're not going to reduce a bus. At the middle and high level, it appears you might be able to get away with it, but we're already so far into planning the routes now. I certainly wouldn't want to change that the day before we come back in full. But the one thing that is really concerning is the elementary routes with, with the elimination of a bus. It'd go up to over a hundred twenty minutes, which is just unacceptable. But I did want to bring that to the committee's attention, as I'm kind of going back and forth on this.
So as of this afternoon, we've received communication from Durham. Actually, it happened during vacation week, to which Justin responded, as he indicated to you, no, that is not in our contract, we do not wish to do that. Unfortunately, it appears that they have gone ahead and made some changes. We have tried to contact the individuals who are in charge, and as of this afternoon, Justin issued another email to Durham, because it is our understanding, and we hope it's incorrect, that they have already made the change and have decided to do this. So we're waiting to see, and I think it was late this afternoon when Justin sent an email back to say, again, as I reiterated last week, this is not acceptable to us. So we just wanted to keep you in the loop.
Chair, could you describe what change you're talking about, that you feel they've made?
Reduced a bus.
So you feel they've reduced the bus?
No, 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 they have not done it yet.
I'm listening to what Dr. Nash just said. She's indicating that she feels they've made a change. I asked what change?
Reduction.
And she's feeling it's been a reduction of a bus.
I, I believe that they have gone forward, because I isn't, they have issued you some routes at this point in time that indicate.
Correct, I'm working with them, trying to iron out the, you know, the middle to high school routes. This afternoon, I received an updated route list with elimination of a bus, to which I responded.
So you received today with an elimination of a bus?
Correct.
So then they've eliminated a bus?
Correct, well, the contract specifies routes approved by the school committee.
I understand what the contract says, but they sent you a list that has nine buses on it, correct?
Correct. That is not what we have put out there.
In forty-eight hours, correct?
Correct. Which is why we're bringing to your attention, and why we have gone back to them. And I, and Justin sent another email this afternoon. So, you know, we just needed you to be aware that they're pulling something that, on us, and I'm assuming it's for a couple of reasons. One, because there is a shortage of drivers, that's apparent, and two, because they no longer have the contract, honestly.
So obviously, it's a breach of contract?
Yeah, right, and that's what we will.
And keep nine payments.
Right, right.
As far as I'm concerned, the school committee.
So we're gonna see what happens, but it scares me that we now have a list that has one less bus.
Well, yeah, and that scares me for the kids.
Exactly, exactly.
Two hours on a bus.
So.
What, what recourse do we have, sorry, through the chair? What recourse do we have? Can our attorneys be contacting them first thing tomorrow morning, and, you know, maybe get in touch with the attorney general, is that what I heard you say? Pal? I mean, is that what our plan is tomorrow morning, first thing at eight a.m.?
I think I want to see what response.
We'll deal with the responses first.
If we got no response, which tends to be the case, then we need to either contact our attorney and have our attorney call them and tell them that this is a breach of contract, and we have, yeah, because it cannot happen. It's as simple as that. We've already, Justin has already indicated that. And it seems they just went ahead and decided to make this move. And just happened, you know, this afternoon, we were tired, they were, again, they had sent it out last week, or had thrown out this idea, and Justin equivocally said, no, that is not acceptable to us.
So, thank you.
Sorry, for the chair, just so for anybody who's, who is watching or will be watching as a parent, I know the bus routes got sent out, there's ten buses, right? Everybody has their plan in place. What is it that we're telling our constituents right as of today? What bus route should they be looking at?
The bus routes that are currently on the website, the ones that we put out.
So the ten bus routes?
The ones that we put out.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Tom, do you have a point?
I know, I can.
Thank you.
I was just wondering about assigned seating for the buses and how that's going, and if children know their designated spots, so when they get on the bus, they're consistently sitting in the same seat for contact tracing purposes.
Got it. So I think last I had left it is, we were told that they have assigned seats and there's name tags. Upon further inspection, I think that Thursday after the, the meeting, I took a trip down to the school to find out that it was a mix of, some had assigned seats, some did not. Actually, the assistant, assistant principal at the Barton School worked with me, and we used the, the lovely charts that we got from Mr. Pelzarski, and assigned the seats. And like I said, some, some buses had it done, some didn't. But now they all have it done at the elementary level. I have provided the same templates to the middle and high schools, so they can have those completed. And those, if they haven't been given to the drivers already, as we were on break last week, they will be to make sure that the, to enforce it.
And, yeah, I was going to say, so who enforces it? We trust that the drivers are enforcing it, yet kids come home and say, hey, I sat in a different seat today. So how do we ensure that kids are sitting in their assigned seats? I mean, I hate to say, I got, I got my, my few that come home and share stories. I just want to make sure that for everybody's safety, they're.
As much as I've tried to avoid putting this on the principals.
Yeah.
The school bus is an extension of the school, so I feel as though that if it's not being the bus driver, would simply have to inform the principal, and would have, we would have to take it from there. We'd have to take it on a case-by-case basis. But we'll have to check, we'll have to check in the morning, make sure kids are sitting where they're supposed to sit, and just check in.
Yeah, I think the little ones, it's harder for them, because their memory goes, you know, the weekend goes by, and they're like, what's, where was that? Where I think the older kids can be more accountable, but unfortunately, those little kids can be forgetful and sometimes swirly.
So just a question in regards to what Mrs. Griffin's asking. I would hope or assume that if a child on bus three is positively diagnosed with COVID, that all of those student riders would be considered close contact, even if they're supposed to be in seat twelve versus seat one? Would we be notifying the entire bus? No?
No, and, we've seen a shared space letter, Michael O.
Okay, so.
However, the CDC, I think, just updated the guidelines. As far as the CDC guidelines, just last week, I believe, reducing it from six feet to three feet. So now it's more in line with what school districts are doing.
Okay.
Exactly, but this, this would apply to the, the bus too. So now it would be within three feet, more than fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period. So that would be more of a close contact, so therefore, on a bus, you wouldn't really have it. But we would do a shared space letter.
Okay, that was my concern, it's just that.
Yeah, there is a notification, we call it letter number three, in our trade.
I haven't gotten.
One, two, or three. Three is shared space.
Okay.
Could be, yeah, where you're not really identified as a close contact in letter number two, but you, you have shared the space, and it's up to you as a parent if you would wish to have your child tested, yeah.
Great, thank you.
I'll follow that with the chair situation with the contract, you know, with the bus routes. If you could kindly please inform the entire committee of the status with that. Any comments from the committee should directly just to me, and then I can go back, so we'll not have, so we don't have a virtual meeting going on over email with questions, or please direct them to me, and then I can go back, and I can work information back and forth to all members. But I think, right now, it is a, it's a very important issue.
Sure.
I know you brought it to our attention, right, Dr. Nash.
Oh, yes.
Keep it surprised. Okay.
But we will let the chair know, and then the chair can, once we get a handle on this.
You can share with everyone.
Yeah.
Because sometimes during the school day, I don't always, I'm not on my phone, so. Yeah, I may not see it at lunchtime or after school. So as everyone knows, and then, if questions come, come through me, or contact Justin or Dr. Nash, please do not reply to all. Good, thank you. All set? Yeah, any other questions? No, you're good.
Thank you.
All right. And Dr. Nash, you have a report for us this evening?
I do. So you, you have a lot of reading information, and I'm certainly not going to go through all of it for you, but in an attempt to begin to look at developing a district-wide learning recovery plan, I wanted to provide you with some of the research that's out there with respect to initial findings. And interestingly enough, I've given you four articles. The first article is actually what I call the watershed article. It's the NWEA article that actually provides the data that both Annenberg Institute, as well as the Brookings Institute, reference. The Judge Lucas Educational Foundation moves in a little bit different vein, but doesn't tell us the research that they use. But if you look at the NWEA, I'll talk about that. But before I do, I'd like to draw your attention to why I'm providing you this information, and that really occurs in the information I provided you with an overview of developing a district learning recovery plan, which is page five of the document you have. And I'll go back to tie it back to what some of the initial findings out of NWEA tend to suggest about the learning recovery and the gap. As you recall, back last, probably January or February, we were aware, we've received a number of pools of money, as all districts have, to help us through COVID. We received CARES money, or what we call ESER one money, which was around three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We received Governor, I call it Governor Baker money, which was around eighty-five thousand. We've received ESER two money, and now we have received what we call ESER three money, or ARP ESER money, as, as it is known, or more affectionately as Joe Biden trillions. The state of Massachusetts is receiving one point eight five billion dollars, and that is disseminated to, and ninety percent of that gets disseminated to LEAs, of which we are one. So while we know the actual amount, when we were planning initially, and we started some of our planning from, as a district-wide building-based team back actually in January and February, thinking that we were proactive, because at that point in time, we were really looking at ESER two money, which as you see, was a little over one million three. And then, we were notified that we are now going to receive an additional large sum of money, a little under three million dollars. So we are looking at, over a two-year period, to, to have four point three million dollars. And it's a very different approach that one might take when you're looking at developing not a one-year plan, but a two-year plan. And so along those lines, I felt it was important for us to pause, step back as an administrative team, although we had already started to look at what personnel, what programs, and what services should we look at to address social, emotional needs of children, unfinished learning, and then learning loss or learning gaps. And how would we do that? So I thought that we needed to step back, and we needed to give ourselves more time to plan over a two-year time period. So what I'm suggesting to you this evening is that the plan should occur and should be something that the new superintendent would be part of as we develop that district plan, because it will be implemented on his watch, certainly. And I would suggest or recommend that we would use the month of May for the building-based teams led by the principals to. teams led by the principals to work with staff to identify personnel, professional development, programs, services, and to make recommendations, which they've already started to do, quite honestly. Actually, have been accumulating some of that today. But to go back to their building-based teams and work with their staff and then to bring us together as a district in an evening meeting where the new superintendent could also attend and we could develop a district plan, which we would then bring to you at the June 14th meeting for approval. It would be a plan that would take into account the spending of $4.3 million. We need to be very cognizant, however, about some things that, and conversations that need to happen. With any personnel that we hire, there is an impact to the town. That impact is felt in insurance and unemployment. So, there needs to be conversations with the town manager about how we might address that, particularly when we see what that plan looks like. And I would intend to try to have those either with the new superintendent, meeting with the town manager and myself, to kind of outline what that might look like so that you don't fall off the cliff in two years and the town doesn't come back and say, "Sorry, but we were impacted so much by this that we're going to not be able to give you X amount of dollars for your budget in FY '24, FY '25." I wouldn't want that to happen. So, the recovery plan should really address all of the components of student learning, student gaps. The NWEA article, interestingly enough, is really what I would consider at this point in time to be the watershed findings, because it compares and looks at data from FY '19 in reading and mathematics in grades three through eight, 4.4 million students. Compares that data to the following fall. Now, here's the problem. The data is old, but there isn't any other data that's out there at this point in time because in fall of '19, people were testing. And then the pandemic broke and no one tested or assessed kids in the spring. So, we have really not a lot of current assessment that goes from March to March. So, we have pre-pandemic to fall of 2020. And primarily, what the information provides us is both a sense of optimism and concern. The optimism comes in the area of reading, because the gains and the losses in reading, I should say, weren't as significant as initially thought they might be. Again, the caution to that is there are some questions as to whether or not the most vulnerable populations were included in these assessments, partly because in some of the assessments, the question about whether or not some of our low-income students, students most vulnerable, SES students, minority students, actually took part in the assessment. So, therefore, we're comparing really more of a white population to a white population. The second piece that I think is critical to look at is the fact that while there were not significant differences in reading, the higher-performing students continued to perform at a higher rate. So, what you're seeing is still a large gap between the haves and the have-nots. In mathematics, however, what you tend to see based on the findings, the initial findings from NWEA, is that the percentile gap is somewhere between 5% to 10%. I thought what was interesting at the very end of this article was some further discussions. Certainly, the picture is more rosy in reading, but again, very individual. We need to look at each student. Less rosy in mathematics. And again, this was an assessment in grades three through eight. More students are falling behind and twice as many students dropped one or more quartiles on the test score, so we're still seeing that. And one of the things that they suggest is that the most vulnerable populations may not have been included the way they typically have been in the past in this assessment data. So, that's the caveat to this. On the last page of this document, there are some considerations that I think are worth noting. One is that there were uneven achievement results across subjects and across grade levels. This indicates that there is going to be irregular gaps in student learning. And certainly, if you look at one of the findings, it suggests that more than ever, teachers are going to have to differentiate instruction because the gaps are going to be that significant. And so, I, we look to talk about something that we all did many years ago, differentiate instruction with Carol Tomlinson and brought that into schools. And that may certainly be an area of professional development that we would think is important for us to consider for our staff, particularly in accessing high-quality mathematics and instruction and differentiating that for our students who are the most vulnerable. So, a lot of stuff to read. The Brookings report actually echoes the same information, says the same thing, as does the more, the more data-driven, more rich Annenberg report. And the only one that is a little different is the report from the George Lucas Foundation, which tends to suggest that the gaps are going to be even higher. But remember that this data represents fall '19, which was pre-pandemic, to fall '20 and does not take into account all of the months after that, right to this point. I am sure that there will be some assessment down the road, but initial findings suggest that we will see larger gaps in mathematics, less gaps in reading potentially, but know that the most vulnerable students, particularly in reading, will continue to have a bigger variation between those who can read. So, I'm recommending simply to the committee that you allow us to go forward to really develop a learning recovery plan for the district that will come, will come back to you for your approval with how to spend the $4.3 million. It will need to take into account some of the outlier costs, however, so that we are better prepared not to fall off the cliff and not to run into the issues that we could run into with hiring a lot of new staff and the potential for unemployment at the end of two years. So, we need to have some conversations with the, with the town on that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Nash. On that same note, I do work on an instructional leadership team as well. And it's funny, but this Lucas report was referenced in one of my, one of my previous meetings from about, about a week and a half ago. And we were talking about the same type of issues. And we're in the room with the leadership team at a school. And also, one of the key things that I can, I can't believe I'm ever going to say this, is but do you think with this magnitude that they're talking about is that we need to start seriously looking at consultants or a consultant group to come and to work with the principals on, in their staff? Because there's so much work ahead and you need to put more, more on people's plates. However, when you get a focused group that's going to come in and ask the questions and get right to the point of the data of like, what are you looking at when you're looking at data? Because you can't, you can't be spun any way. And the outside set of eyes that will come in and will focus on, here's your area of focus, here's your quarter turns to get to here, but here's the big picture where you want to get to base. Sometimes I think you really need to take a look at a consultant. 10 years ago, I said, "They're a waste of money." However, right now, looking at these numbers, we're going to bring someone.
So, I have recommended potentially that we look at consultant. You know, I certainly put down Tower Trainer, who's very familiar with the district. I have not spoken with her about this, particularly to work. I'd like the principals to be able to work and have access, obviously, to a consultant when they're working in their buildings with their staff. I also want, the principals have done yeoman's work on developing the plans really in their vacuums, but they need to expand that and involve the other stakeholders. And I have not asked them to do that at this point in time, primarily because up to this point, up to three weeks ago or so, we were really looking at a much smaller sum of money and not a two-year framework. But now, when you're looking at $4.3 million, there's a lot that you can do with that. And you've got to be very cognizant and careful about how you're going to use this money. But to your, to respond to your question, yes, I certainly know that there are companies already out there that have advertised that they are willing and ready and we could reach out to them. I know that Rebus is one of them and you see their information out there and others are sending you. So, it certainly makes some sense, even if we have to slow down the process and that we don't come to you until the second meeting in June, I think we need to take time. And I want to engage, obviously, the new superintendent who will be leading this. I think that's a critical piece of this also. So, so that's one of the reasons why I wanted to delay all of this too.
Corey? Thanks, Dr. Nash. And I think as educators, anybody looking at that research, probably would have seen those conclusions coming, that we would have, you know, we know that where those gaps are going to be. Yes, my question is, are we confident in the assessments we have as a district and their ability to identify those same subgroups or, I guess, assess those same subgroups? Or is that something we need to anticipate the district curriculum coordinator looking at?
We have started an assessment continuum for the district. It's funny that I have that out because that's part of the discussion that we need to have. One of the litmus test questions to ask is, how do you, how did you identify students? How do you know? And how do you know that whatever you're going to do, whatever the treatment is, is going to be successful? And how will you measure that? And so, I do think we need to look at that. We have a number of assessments that we do use in the district. I think we need to go back and make sure that we have all of the assessments, particularly in mathematics and reading, that we would need. But interestingly enough, when you read these reports, they're also relying very heavily on teacher-driven diagnostic assessment. They're saying, "Don't be so overly concerned. You obviously want some." We have DIBELS, we have iStation, you know, we have Amplify, we have, we are using iXL or looking at purchasing that and Lexia, but that won't give us immediate, those two, those last two wouldn't give us immediate assessments to use. But we need to look at it and make sure that the continuum that we started to develop will give us that information. And if not, what will we use? Yeah, what will we use?
And particularly for math, like I've had a concern, being a math teacher, being married to a math teacher, and my in-laws being former math teachers, that we, we look at the assessments that our kids have had and a lot of them have been book-driven and online type of platforms. And as you're talking about teachers having common assessments, one thing I would really like to see personally is things that are very meaty, that have application where kids are doing, you know, complex mathematical thinking and not A, B, C, D. I'm going to pick one and maybe get 25% chance of getting this correct. So, I would love for this district to have that common assessment piece. And I know that they're working on it in the middle school and I've heard kind of the high school, but again, the curriculum coordinator.
You call that type of assessment target method match. And developing common assessments is probably the most difficult thing that teachers do because it means that you have to understand what it is that the standard is asking with respect to Bloom's. Is it knowledge or is it evaluate? And the type of question you develop needs to match that. It's extremely long, involved process, but I do think there are some excellent products out there that have test builder questions that you can train staff to be able to select the appropriate question that matches the standard and what you're asking the student to do. Are we asking them to know it? Are we asking them to evaluate it? Are we asking them to compare it? So, yeah. And again, it takes time. It's going to take time. We need, we don't have all that time to do some of that, but we have, we have to make sure that we have data or evidence at this point that's going to allow us to make some decisions on how to spend this money, make, you know, for the district. So, that's our first concern. And if we don't, what do we have? Can we develop something?
I want to follow-up question is, when is our, when are we thinking possibly of interviewing for, you know, a director of curriculum?
So, until this, until the town meeting, your budget doesn't get approved until May 5th. After that time, any position that is part of your FY '22 budget can be posted. Then I would want to have a conversation with the superintendent to see what his plan might be in this whole process, because obviously, that person is going to be working with the curriculum director. And so, purposely, you're going to wait until that individual and myself, until we have conversations around that and how he would like to proceed.
And then that hire deal would be, I suppose, July 1?
I would hope, but again, I, you know, I need to have that conversation, not knowing, you know, how this other person is going to be transitioning into this position. But similar to what I, we did, I think, when I was leaving, Dr. Solinsky had asked me to do one piece of the process and then leave the rest for her. So, I don't know what's going to happen. We're going to leave it up to the new superintendent.
Great. Thank you. Dave, yes?
Yeah, I want to thank you. There's been some great ideas up here and I'm really looking forward to this recovery plan and taking a peek at it. I think it's, it's going to be great.
Well, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think that you're going to see that districts are probably going to be required to submit something, my hunch, my hunch is sometime to the commissioner, but I may be off-base.
No, I think you're right.
Yeah, so I'm trying to anticipate.
Either, either way, I think it's, it's great to have for us. I get, my question is more, I don't know, more curiosity of this, you have those two, you know, stars there of anticipated. Are we thinking that that number might not be that number? And the second thing is, is this, is the ESER II money already, how does it work, I guess? Justin, are you, you, Dr. Nash? Do we, do we have that? Does that come in like installment payments? Like, how does that work?
So, I can address, we were with ESER II and then Justin can jump in and answer whether it comes in installments. We were allowed to make a determination as a district whether we wanted to submit for April or July. We did not need ESER II money in April. We were still working off of ESER I, quite frankly. So, we pushed that all forward, thinking that we would be working on and developing a plan solid around $1,003,000 and some change. So, that's that. The second part of your question was, is that, two asterisks or whatever, is that what we really believe we're getting? The answer is yes. I think it was a little bit over three and now it's been reduced a bit. That, I would say, is the number that was released and on the, is it, was it on the DOR website or the?
DOR, oh, it was on the DESI website.
DESI website. So, it hasn't been confirmed, but I would tell you, based on the Title I formula and based on Bill Bell, who is the financial CEO at DESI, that he had indicated that districts could expect to receive two to two and a half times what they received in ESER II money. So, we all, and it's based on the Title I formula. So, there's a great disparity in what districts are receiving. So, the answer is, I believe that's, yeah. As far as how it comes in installments, Justin, you want to respond to how these grants operate?
So, what happens is the, we apply for it, similar to an entitlement grant. Once that's approved, as we spend it, I, I make, I monitor the budget and make a request to cover that prior month expenses. And I'm also supposed to project out the next 30 days. So, that's what I do. On a monthly basis, I request the funds, it's sent to the treasurer's office, I confirm the deposit and that, that's pretty much it.
Treasurer's office, meaning the town's treasurer?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, that money is here. It's just you use it and then submit for reimbursement, essentially?
Correct. We spend it down and as we spend it down, I submit for reimbursement and, including the next 30 days ahead, look ahead and that gets some deposit at the treasurer's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the only other thing I would say is we have to be very cautious of, of the potential impact, again, of unemployment and health benefits. Roughly, I think a cost for a family insurance plan per person in the town is around $20,000. So, as much as I know, all of us, and I've started to look at the building principals' requests for personnel, and we could easily, you know, top this large number, but we also have to be cognizant of what that impact would be down the road.
Right, it's really sustainable.
So, that, that's the reason why I've already reached out to Jennifer Callahan to say, "Once we know what this plan is, we need to have a discussion so we can plan for the future." Because I certainly don't want that impact to be felt in your future budgets. Tried to work that out.
Excellent. Thank you. Anything else for us, Dr. Nash?
No, that's it. I'm not going to budge you all over the rest of those articles, but they're more for you to read.
They're very good reading. Okay. Tell me, if you have a...
I do have a warrant report.
Thank you.
So, a warrant report dated for April 26, 2021. I signed a payroll warrant on April 15, 2021 for $584,060.66. I signed a payroll warrant on April 15th, 2021 for $584,060.66. An accounts payable warrant dated April 20th, 2021 for $165,390.62. And an accounts payable warrant dated April 27th, 2021 for $24,405.59. And that is all.
Thank you. And you may continue with, with your request.
I know we tried to have a policy subcommittee meeting, I think it was last Thursday, I'm losing, it was about nine days ago, it might have been about, with that vacation in there, kind of losing track of my time. However, we didn't have enough members for a quorum. And we do have, we're supposed to have about 11 members that are consistently part of our policy subcommittee, but Mrs. Lepore has retired. And we do have another member who hasn't really attended the meetings throughout the year. So I'm assuming that that member is not interested in participating anymore. And I would like to entertain the possibility of posting the listing for membership again and soliciting at least two more members to, or maybe, you know, seeing if everybody else that's on this would like to continue. So we know that we have members that are truly invested in the policy subcommittee. The ones that have been attending obviously have been fantastic, but people's lives change, people get busy.
And so there is a policy subcommittee?
Yeah.
And there is no number requirement, we put it on that, so you, we can simply, you can post for two more members or you can simply take attendance, you can poll your board on who is no longer interested in this, and you can just remove those members, thus removing the positions, puts you back into a quorum basis.
So, yeah, it's something I think we need to do at our next meeting.
The next meeting is find out if people are still interested in that, for the, for reappointment. And then the reappointments would be actually, can I put this question tonight, after the new boards elected, there will be the reappointment process?
Yeah.
And you can see if those, if those members want to be reappointed. And then after the reappointment, you can, you could solicit new, new members or just eliminate positions.
Okay. Good to know. So thank you for that input. So I think we need to take some steps so we make sure we have a quorum if there's people that are not attending anymore for whatever reason. And I just want to thank Dr. Nash, if I can continue on kind of with my, my members' comments this, this evening for the wonderful research. I mean, going through all those articles, it was very informative and it was nice to see. I mean, we know it all the time, we see the level of dedication that Dr. Nash has, but everything she does is just with such thought and dedication and evidence. And I really appreciate having all those things behind a decision. And it's always there. So it was, it was really nice to read, even though I think it was like 100-plus pages of research she did for us. I appreciate it and I appreciate the summary she gave us too. I mean, huge amount of time on her part. And that is all. Thank you.
I'm short tonight, actually. I just wanted to say thank you, how much I appreciate what StuCo has done throughout this pandemic to try to keep the high school students engaged and still having a little bit of fun. I really appreciate their thoughtfulness in doing that and looking forward. I'm also very happy to have Second Step Program being the virtual. I was a Second Step teacher as well, and I know that different teachers are trained at different levels and have a different experience, so I'm happy to see that it will be uniform. And I wanted to point out that there is a measure built into that program, as well as Ms. Bellhumor had said. And I also have a thank you here to Dr. Nash for this amazing learning recovery plan. So much work went into it. It's very comprehensive and I really appreciate all of that you did for us.
Thank you.
Of course.
I just want to continue beating the drum on the superintendent visits coming up. I hope the staff, administration and community members get involved and, and give us feedback for this very important decision. And I just also want to say good luck to the middle school and the high school and their full returns this week. I think that's very exciting.
Thank you. Can I go?
Yeah, echo a lot of what was said by my fellow members. I, I do want to just steer back quickly to the JEB policy of the kindergarten and first grade entrance and also the JF school admissions and residency. I went back and found it was June 8th. We tabled the kindergarten and first grade entrance and we tabled the school admission and residency for a second reading. So I would like to, yes, go ahead.
If you look at the next meeting on the 22nd?
Okay.
The motion failed, it was a two to two vote.
All right.
And then it hasn't been brought back.
Which, which motion? The J, the JEB?
JEB, correct.
So I guess, yeah, thank you, that's good to know. So should we bring both of these back up, seeing we, we tabled the second reading of the JF? So is that possible to put on the agenda for next meeting?
Next meeting being, can I go, May 10th? We are just going to do the interview process that evening.
Okay, that's it?
That's it. We're just doing interviews that night. We'll just keep it simple with the superintendents.
We could put it on the 24th. So I, I have quite a list on the 24th.
That would be a new committee.
So it will be a new committee.
I just think it's, I mean, we, again, it was June and, you know, I get it, you know, going into the summer and then we start the fall and, you know, all the, the three plans, remote, hybrid, you know, so it just kind of got lost, but I definitely, if we can just keep it on the radar and bring it back up.
JF and JEB or just JF?
JEB and JF. I think we should bring them both back to the table. We never completed it and I just think part of our job is.
Do we have?
Policy committee, we brought it forward and I think we should follow through with a vote.
Okay. All right. We can bring them back.
Thank you.
Oh, no, that's it.
That's it? Okay. This one I'm, tonight is, we did get an email this afternoon about Katie Phillips in, as our, at our last meeting. He talked about his tech peer review that he's going through and he's looking for two school community members and that will be on May 17th. It's in your email, maybe at 5:30, I believe, the 6:30, it was, it was Zoom. If two, if two members are interested, please contact Helen. And it'd be nice if he's looking again, look for two school community representatives. And beyond that, again, I thank the board. I do look forward to an exciting weeks, exciting weeks with, with the visits. And I did see the form that went out this afternoon as well, too, on a superintendent search committee. It's a great form. I think you can get some really good feedback. And there are, there are a lot of opportunities for people. If you look at the letters that went out, with all different aspects, all members of the community have the input, they can watch, they can watch the dinner with the superintendent, the working dinner, and be able to give, give some good feedback before they go. And then we'll be voting, we will behold our interviews on May 10th and hope to have the vote that evening. And that's all I have. Before I do so, I will open the floor. Public comment, being none, I'll close the floor. Next meeting will be May 10th and that will be superintendent, the superintendent interviews for Mr. Packard and Mr. Lucas. Being that, nothing else, no other further business. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Move to second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose abstain, being none, 5-0, we are, we are adjourned. Thank you.